The next item is relative to the compensation and classification study. And I'll ask Ms. Mary Beth Johnson, who's our Director of Human Resources, to come up and address you. You may remember, this is an item that goes back quite some time. Quite honestly, we have a policy that requires that compensation and classification be looked at every two years. I believe it had been eight years. I think I'm right in that. And so what's seven?
Seven years.
Seven years. This is a follow-up to the presentation that was given to you in June. And with that, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Offen, Vice Chairman Ms. Darden, and Board members. Again, we'll go back to the June meeting where you all took, adopted a motion to refer the study recommendations from Evergreen that was with us that evening to county staff to review and provide recommendations to your Board's Personnel Committee on feasibility of any implementation of a compensation and classification study. I'd like to commend you all for having the analysis done, just as the state and other local government bodies do. The state, for example, just recently announced pay range adjustments effective September 1st in many areas, and many surrounding localities are doing or have done a similar analysis in the past even three to four years. I recently reviewed this weekend, sat down and reviewed all three to 400 performance evaluations done by our, on our staff. They were asked to do a self-evaluation, and on that, one of the recurring themes, time and time again, was looking for competitive compensation, not just a raise, but being on par with their other adjacent localities. There was one particular comment that an employee of six years shared, and I asked him for permission to share that comment. He won't name nameless, as well as his department, but it speaks volumes. And I quote, "I have personally turned down four offers within the last 24 months for positions with adjacent localities whose pay ranges all started out, at their minimums, higher than my current salary with the county after six years. Salary is not my only motivation. I enjoy the work environment here, public service, my colleagues, and especially servicing the citizens of Olive White County. However, it would certainly be appreciated to compete with the salary baseline for similar positions in adjacent localities. It would be nice," this person quotes, "to see the county have a plan of action to overcome the noted shortfalls in compensation." Very articulate gentleman, very professional, as many that are here tonight and that serve our citizens. And he gave me permission to share that. Come to review some of the key points, and these were shared with you back in June. The final report that's there before you at your station notes that, on average, our county pay plan salaries lag the market by negative 9.9 percent. It also revealed that 87 percent of all of our employees, full and part-time, have salaries in the lower half of their current pay range. These are those same pay ranges that have not been adjusted in seven years. This is also where you see your biggest indicator of salary compression, where you have those folks who've been here making the same or similar to new employees. 63 percent of the positions are recommended for a compensation adjustment. That's about two-thirds of our workforce. Some adjustments that will be proposed, and that are proposed, are needed to job titles only, to better align those with the work being performed. Around a third of the cost are to bring the Sheriff's Office into our plan. They currently are not in our pay plan and don't have assigned pay ranges. They are the only constitutional office and department that does not operate within the plan. That costs approximately $263,000. The total estimated implementation cost that includes fringes is approximately $817,230. I'll kind of tackle this one with our county administrator, who, we've been looking at the fund level, which is one of the things we promised and we did with our Personnel Committee of the Board, because, as you know, your budget is broken out into some specific funds that don't impact at the general fund level. And so as you can see here, you'll see the totals for full and part-time employees, as part-time employees are all included in the study and were analyzed. There are certain impacts to those enterprise funds and special revenue funds. You will see that currently, of the positions in our pay plan, it impacts the cost for full-time and part-time of the general fund. And to incorporate the Sheriff's Office, which is their desire, our Sheriff Mark Marshall has been, as he said, repeatedly seeking to have his positions included.
And what I'll stop right here and note, the Board, you recognize that there would be a cost associated with implementing this plan. You set aside $350,000 in the budget that's been adopted to cover those that are in the plan. We are only short by about $72,000 from recollection, and we have, that's to do what's in the current plan. To bring the Sheriff's Office in, we have gone through and looked at some vacancies that we haven't been able to fill. Again, we have, I believe Ms. Johnson will talk about the tough time we have in filling some of these positions. We can cover that cost by holding those vacancies, freezing those positions to cover bringing him in. We think that the benefit clearly outweighs the negative on that, to get everyone under one umbrella and to do it all at one time. And the other funds, again, when we developed the budget, we anticipated these costs that would come along with it. The only part that we did not anticipate is about another $75,000 above what you budgeted in the general fund, plus to bring in the Sheriff's Department.
And I think it would be helpful, and we share this with the Personnel Committee of your Board, some examples, and no names, but just sort of how compensation studies work. When we met with employees back in the fall, when we kicked off the program with Evergreen coming here, we touched on the fact that never will a salary be decreased by doing a study, which is very important for you to keep in mind. Never will they recommend, or we recommend, any salary be decreased. However, not every employee, when you have a study, receives an increase. Sometimes the study will reveal that they are a new employee, and they're where they should be in their proposed pay range. Sometimes it will say they may have been with us for quite some time, and they are towards the end of their career path in that pay range, regardless of how long they stay with us. So I'll take for you a deputy sheriff. Now, they're currently, again, not in the pay plan today, but are seeking to be coming into that. If they were at a salary of, say, $37,104, the proposed salary, putting them into that proposed pay range there, you can see that the proposed minimum, this is someone with two and a half years in the job, is far above where they are today, and that that $41,669 figure comes from placing them in that new proposed pay range where he would fall, he or she, based on their time in job. Sergeant, same thing. Let's look at someone who's been in the sergeant classification for 10 years. Again, we create a pay range for them that's in your attachments that you have there. That pay range is starting at $48,189. These proposed pay ranges, as was mentioned in June, are to put us just on par with the market, not leading, and hopefully, you know, we're not going to be lagging, but getting us on average. So you can see that that person, 10 years in, is making just at where that minimum will be set. Therefore, that adjusted salary you can see there would be, just as an example, $57,907, and that, again, is placing them in that new proposed pay range based on 10 years in to a pay range. If you look at a pay range, that generally stands in government for about 30-year career path in a job, from minimum to maximum, if they did not change jobs. And we know a lot of employees do move around, particularly in our law enforcement. Animal control officer, we have one of those, a couple of those with us tonight. Again, someone making, say, $29,500. You can see the proposed pay range. They don't have one today, but it would come in beginning at $35,960, placing that person that's been here dedicated, working day in, day out, $39,000, again, putting them exactly where they're be. So you can see it's a uniform, consistent approach, which takes into account time and job. Our fire and EMS lieutenant, again, two and a half years in the job, we were able to get a measure on how far this lagged the market, because they are in our current plan. You can see that original pay range starts at $42,000. The proposed pay range starts at 48. It was found to lag the market by 25.8 percent. So when you heard me say 9.9 percent earlier, that's an average lagging the market. That means there were many jobs that were in the 20%, 30% range of lagging the market, and then there were some that maybe were found to be only 1% or 2% or ahead of the market. And so that's an average. This is one of those that would take this gentleman or lady, whoever's serving for us in this job, two and a half years into that pay range at $50,640. Then, of course, we have, you know, very diverse, we have over 150 different job titles here, our sanitation drivers. They are working hard, day in, day out, in harsh conditions. Even someone with a quarter of a year in the job here would receive an increase in this scenario, because our current minimum is $23,611, and the new proposed pay range would begin to get us, on average, competing with our market at $26,834. Therefore, you can see that that amount where they're placed, that is an adjustment for that individual, but it still is only placing them a quarter of a year into the proposed pay range. Deputy clerk two, we have deputy one through fours in our constitutional offices. And before you, you have a letter of support from our constitutional officers. I have worked with them in filling vacancies in their office. Some of them are here tonight, and they, as well, suffer in the same regard. You can see their original pay range starts at $27,333. It jumps to $29,585, and someone with six years in the job gets placed at $32,953, as an example. That was found to lag the market by 16 percent. Our deputies here in those constitutional officers, offices, whether they be the Sheriff's Office, Clerk of Court, Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue, you name it, they are wearing multiple hats. They're not just a deputy clerk two you find in a larger locality. They're actually doing more, because it's less of them. So they are having to carry out the 800-plus duties of the clerk's office, for example, and they're having to know them all, whereas in a larger locality, they may only know sort of probate or land records. Here, they know it all. Important to review some of the challenges, again, we've had those hard-to-fill positions. I was just speaking to you about the deputy clerk. Some of these have carried six to 12 months in length trying to fill the positions. Planners, engineers, financial positions are especially hard. Even our field force labor, like utility systems workers and mechanics of our pump stations, very difficult to fill, and especially public safety. I know many of you have talked with the sheriff about his concerns and the turnover he's experienced. Countywide, we've experienced a turnover rate of 16 percent, which is extremely high when you look at the cost of that loss of investment in not only training, certifying, equipping them, the overtime costs, filling those staffing gaps as well. Salary compression, that sounds like a funny word to basically say, again, if you, folks are going to be kind of bumping into each other, those with greater service time here with the county are being compensated at the same level as new employees. And that becomes a morale issue, and a fairness, and even can be a legal concern for us. Job descriptions, when I got here, I found, and I've shared with you, that there were many offices that did not have job descriptions, or they were outdated with what the appropriate physical requirements were, what the duties were, similar to our job titles. So the study gives us all new job descriptions, and we'll be rolling those out for review by the departments if we were able to proceed following this evening. Also, our goal is to balance total compensation. We need to balance the pay and benefits. Not all of our employees utilize the county benefits. They may be on their spouse's plan, and so they're looking still for that pay structure to be competitive. Also, the Virginia retirement system is constantly making adjustments to ensure their plan is fiscally, you know, sound. And so we don't have the bargaining tools we once had with the VRS plans. I was just having this conversation with our Clerk of Court, and it makes it difficult when you're trying to recruit when the game is constantly changing and your salaries aren't keeping up. Evergreen has provided us a recommendation for implementation based on that 30-year career path of a pay range. What it would do first is take all employees that are below that new minimum of that proposed range, we were just looking at those proposed ranges, and it puts them there. Then it says, how long have they been in that job? And it tries to get them more along, closer to that midpoint. I know one time Mr. Jefferson and I were discussing, I think at the June meeting, of how do employees move through a range? Well, one thing is, you've got to get them moved through based on their time and job. You have to find a consistent means to do that. So that's what this is doing. It also normalizes salaries for those department leadership positions, which require a minimum of 10 years of progressively responsible experience. Again, we've shared with you our problems with long-running vacancies of nine to 12 months and the impacts that come with that. This recommendation provides for a recalibrated plan, just as we have to recalibrate our speedometers and all kinds of other things that you all know and you do maybe with your equipment. You have to recalibrate your plan when it's been seven years since you've adjusted your pay scales, your job titles, and your pay ranges. It adjusts, again, the time based on, the salaries based on the amount of time they have in job. It helps us with the retention efforts of keeping the talented service professionals we have here. These are public servants. They're serving the citizens. They're doing it excellent. We heard remarks tonight of how wonderful it is to engage with our employees, and we want to keep them here. We've invested in training them. It provides competitive pay ranges, on average with the market. Our competitive job market is whoever Evergreen benchmarked against, looking at the actual work performed, the qualifications required. That doesn't restrict you to only looking at communities of a small size, but the actual jobs you are needing to have performed and where you are pulling them from to fill those jobs. Again, a deputy sheriff, an engineer, an inspector, an animal control officer, they all have to have the same required credentials and certifications to do those jobs and carry out the things in the code of Virginia or the county code, no matter the size of the community they're serving. They've benchmarked us against Gloucester County, James City County, Prince George County, York County, Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Suffolk, and Williamsburg. And again, they're where I hear often, and we see applicants coming from, and they're driving here. They want to come and be a part of Olive White. It alleviates the pay compression that exists today. That's one of the biggest things we get out of this, is what's called internal equity of our jobs and where our employees fall. It's something we can uniformly apply to everyone. I can stand behind and discuss, and I'm doing so tonight, and will do so with each of our employees that have a question. It clarifies job titles and the work performed, gets us those new updated job descriptions that we need, and ensures compliance with legal considerations. Also in your packet that dovetails with this, to ensure that we maintain the uniformity and consistency, that's so important with salaries. Salaries can become one of your biggest legal pitfalls. So we want to update our salary administration rules that you find in these sections. Some of them date back to 2007 or before. In there, there's a couple of amendments clarifying that not only full-time, but also regular part-time employees shall have performance evaluations annually. We have been doing this the past two years, and we will continue to, but this gets it in policy. It removes a duplicate section on reclassifications that exists in another chapter, and it implements the policy to allow for the provision of equity adjustments in extenuating circumstances. So it allows us to talk with a constitutional officer or department head and work, and for my office to work with them on any extenuating circumstances that we may have to look at. Proposed amendments, again, changes the frequency of that study. You heard Ms. Seward refer to that the County Policy Manual states we're to do a study every two years. It changes that to something more realistic, which is every three to five years. And so once you get this recalibrated, it helps you, because it's easier to maintain going forward. It adds a planned maintenance provision that provides for a cost of living adjustment to the pay range, equal to CPI. So that helps us to kind of keep up and not dig a hole so deep that then it's more expensive to climb out of later. Also, it gives us, again, consistent rules for things like promotions. So it recommends that promoted employees, it will state, receives a 5 percent salary increase when they're promoted, or they go to their new pay grade minimum, whichever is greater. Right now, it gives a very larger sliding scale up to the midpoint, which allows for inconsistencies, inequities, and, again, some of those legal concerns that can crop Similarly, we've had employees who often, they seek to take a demotion, because, say, they want to try a different job here at the county. Maybe they've been a 911 dispatcher, and they want to go and work over at the animal shelter, and they decide, I want to potentially go be a kennel assistant. Well, if that's a lower pay grade, currently, they're being required in our policy today to take a 5 percent pay cut per pay grade down. I've had employees here have to take a 10%, 15%, 20% deduction just to go and learn a different skill set. They don't want to leave the county. They just want, maybe, they're ready to try something new. So this says instead that they take at least a 5 percent, kind of works the reverse of promotions, or the new pay grade minimum. If an employee is reclassified, they would receive a 5 percent salary increase or new pay grade minimum. You all would have to, you know, generally, those things are tied to the budget process each year, if we're looking at making any of those type of changes. And then recommendation that employees who transfer. So if I transfer from a grade 110 position in public utilities to a grade 110 position in parks and recreation, it currently says I may receive a salary increase, and now it will say I shall not, because anything within that same pay band is the same compensable level of work. And so we want to kind of tighten that down a little bit and get that cleared up. I have basically a two-month need of a communication campaign. These are the things we haven't been able to do. I'm kind of ready to do those and get going with your permission this evening. We would be then meeting with, I would be holding meetings with the constitutional officers, department heads, and the registrar to review the process and timeline and make sure that they have all their questions answered. Then we would have a review period where I would send them the draft job descriptions and any Fair Labor Standards Act changes. This is if there's a change to someone who now is going to be considered exempt from overtime, and we do have a couple of changes recommended. This is where you get those legal implications. Once you have an analysis done, you have to notify and work through those. We would hold employee information sessions here in the boardroom. We definitely want the entire Sheriff's Office to feel comfortable and come to the sessions, because it is a new concept for them being in the pay plan. We would give an employee informational letter to every employee from my staff that would discuss their, how it impacts them individually. And then I would then have a period of concerns and appeals meetings, where I would meet one-on-one with one of my staff present to help get back to any concerns, that we may need Evergreen to relook at things, or get more information from their supervisor or department head. And there is a great deal of work that would be done on our financial system with my working with Mr. Terry's staff and payroll, to ensure that all changes and coding is done within the MUNA system. So the action before you tonight is to adopt a motion to adopt the resolutions as provided that would effectuate the amendments to the fiscal year 15, 16 position, classification, and compensation plan, and you have that schematic list of grades and titles there in your packet, as well as to the county policy manual edits I reviewed effective October 1st, as well as authorize the execution of the memorandum of agreement between the Board and Sheriff Mark Marshall, effective October 1st. Again, this timing dovetails nicely with a lot of those adjustments being made at the state level to their pay range adjustments. It aids the recruitment and retention of employees, gets the sheriff incorporated into the plan, which is what he's been desiring, and what we feel is definitely will be a benefit to his employees who are serving in the line of duty there, and streamlines our salary rules, provides those competitive pay ranges, clarifies a lot of the job titles, and kind of gives us a fresh slate to start from with a new plan. What questions could I answer this evening?
When you did this study, did you take into consideration the 2 percent raise that we just did for insurance?
Yes.
Which gave a person making $100,000, got $2,000 to pay for insurance that only cost $512. So in essence, they got a $1,500 raise.
We did take into account the cost of living increase. What this, the numbers, say, those scenarios we looked at on the total cost, as well as the individual examples I provided, are based on July 1st, 2015 salaries. So had you not given that 2 percent cost of living across the board with the VRS phase in to certain folks that have to receive that per law, you would actually have a higher price tag than what we have today. Again, that was with that already factored in, putting them where they should go.
All right.
Very good question. Other questions that I could help with?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'd make a motion that we would adopt the resolution.
Heard the motion is in discussion. I have a few questions I'd like to ask along those lines. The positions are frozen. Will they stay frozen?
In the short term, yes. They, I've met with all the department heads on those frozen positions. For example, one's an inspector. Right now, with the permit activity, we're okay. We don't predict anything in the near term that's going to make a difference there, so we can freeze that position. We haven't been able to fill it anyway. I think we have a planning position, again, not a lot of activity, so it's not a problem right now. I'm not going to tell you that it's a long-term solution, but it's a way to get the sheriff into the plan and to do this uniformly. I feel confident this year we're good. I'm not going to tell you that we're good for five years, because I can't tell you that.
It just depends on the economy.
It depends on the economy.
If the economy takes off, then...
I picked positions that were, we think we feel good about. I did not pick positions that were critical. I tried to pick the things that I felt comfortable we could leave open for over a year to two years, but I can't commit beyond that.
In comparing salaries, benefits considered, let's say, you compare, let's just say you compare with Gloucester, and the Gloucester pays 65 percent of their health benefits, and we pay, I think, 97 percent. Is that taken into consideration?
It is not, because when you haven't adopted your, adjusted your scales in that long, and they generally have the same comparable benefits as we do. We are trying to make sure that our compensation is on par. We can't determine who's going to take the health insurance or who isn't, and when we're recruiting, we can't even ask those questions. So we have to be able to go out front and be competitive, at least on average, which is all this does. This really would have had a much higher price tag if it put us anywhere near above average in the market.
This is just compensation? It's not...
It's compensation, yes. Now, we are looking at the balance, as I said. It's a big effort. We are having bi-monthly meetings to review and have strategies to deal with the healthcare reform, changes that are being pushed on us, as well as, you know, beefing up our wellness program and trying to do a lot of, you know, creative things within the bounds that we have with the local choice program we're in, and possibly shopping other options, so that we can balance that out.
Ms. Offen, and if I could add to that, because I think it's important to note, you know, I meet every month with a group of employees, and I have made it a point to bring to everyone's attention that health insurance costs will go up for employees. I think it's important to note that, which it's been difficult to do, because our compensation was so out of whack. It's made it challenging, but I've had to make it clear that it is an area with all of the regulatory changes at the federal level, our benefits will continue to be adjusted there. It's just, that's the facts of the matter. And so I've tried to make that very well-known. Whenever I've gotten questions, and I get them every single month about this study and when it would be implemented, and I've told them that, you know, we can't just look at one piece, we have to look at both. And so it's been made very clear that we will have to make adjustments in health insurance as we move forward.
So if we implement this framework, if we implement this framework, so we put in place a process, if you would, that supposedly adjusts things and works according to certain implementation standards. So would we have to redo this in three to five years, do a whole new study? Is that what's...
Well, the, you know, generally, every local government, state government, federal government, you just don't hear about all of them. You know, I know my dad works for the state, my brother-in-law works for the feds, and you don't hear about them doing this, but they do it all behind the scenes to adjust and check where they are. So we're saying, instead of every two years, like the County Policy Manual states now, go to every three to five. And sometimes the market conditions will, you know, whatever challenges you're having, whether it be the market's picked up, or you're having still trouble recruiting, you'd go back and do an analysis. What this does is put in place the pay grading structure.
Are the cost of living increases tied to this?
Yes. That would be the basis.
And the nice thing is, by tying that in here, that's the maintenance piece that she spoke about. That's hopefully, if you're doing it the right way, you can prolong the length of time between doing these. And that's why it's, to me, it's a good recommendation to not do it every two years. If you're going to be adjusting those ranges by the CPI every year, your plan should maintain pretty well. Now, clearly, market can change, and you all can probably remember, when technology took off, you couldn't find IT people. And that was an area where the market shifted so much that, in a study, those were the positions that would take off, and the salaries just rose exponentially over what was typical for other positions. That's the kind of thing you're always going to have to keep your eye on.
I think, and I'll get Ms. Darden to speak, but to me, this issue is very much a part of fairness, of treating our employees right, of paying people what they deserve. The whole thing about the inequities of people that have been working here an extended period of time, and someone coming in and making equal or greater salaries is simply unjust. So I think that needs to be addressed, and it sends the wrong message to our employees. I think we need to get on a standard, we need to do what's right, and so I'm certainly in favor. Ms. Darden.
No, I would just like to say, we, the public can see, we have a letter here from all of our constitutional officers, from the Clerk of the Court, the Commissioner of Revenue, the Commonwealth Attorney, the Treasurer, and the Sheriff in support. And they have, they've expressed in this letter that over the last past seven years, they have had trouble retaining and keeping good employees. The sheriff mentioned that he has trouble with recruitment and maintaining quality people. And again, this is another example where we've had to go back and fix things, and we're fixing their job description, their pay, their policy, and it is about fairness. And I think that's what, and that's what this is all about, is fixing and fairness.
Any other comments from the Board? Ms. Castin.
Chairman, I, I'm sorry, I apologize rest of the board for being so quick to, I thought you were looking for me to make a motion. Anyway, the, one of the key reasons for my support of this... Anyway, the, one of the key reasons for my support of this is that staff worked so hard in the last budget process to identify savings that helped contribute to this. And in the follow-up, we have, as Ms. Darden pointed out, we have the group working together, we have Ms. Seward working with the folks throughout the entire, all of our employees are working effectively to bring us up, fully up to speed instead of halfway. And we are only getting that at this, it's just some money, but it's not all that it might have been without these efforts and sacrifice, and it's working together among the, across the whole range of our departments and our employees, including our constitutional friends. So I just think that, in the spirit of, as you say, fairness, we've got to go forward. I just do.
Any other comments? Ms. Jefferson?
I spent some time with Ms. Johnson, and I think what she's doing, she did a great job as far as putting together a package for the employees of the county, and she was really thinking about the well-being of the employees and want to do the right thing for them. But when I talked with her and she showed me some of the numbers, I was floored. I said, how in the world can a county employee afford to raise a family at this rate? And I tell you, we even went a step further, and I didn't ask for a name, but I asked for a position, and when she told me what an engineer makes for the county, I couldn't believe it. So it was time, it's been time for us to reclassify and give these people good pay so we could retain and recruit good employees.
Thank you, Ms. Jefferson. Any other comments? The motion's on the floor. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Darden?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Castine?
Yes.
And Chairman Al.